This meeting of the school committee is called to order. Thank you so much for coming. Good evening, good afternoon, good evening. Our first order of business is the calendar, which as usual is full. I don't think there are any more meetings. Ms. Cohen, I think the font keeps getting smaller and smaller.
[laughter]
But please join us at all of the above. Any additions? Oh, the only one I would add is the Asian American Family Network in Brookline is having their Lunar New Year celebration on February...
This Saturday.
Oh, this Saturday.
No.
Is it this Saturday?
It's in February.
Let me just look really quickly. We'll find it and we will somehow get it here.
I know, but the celebration is in January.
The celebration might be in January. I do know that there's an event, the Pan Asian Lunar New Year Celebration, on Saturday, February 28th from 12:30 to 3:00, which doesn't mean there isn't something this weekend also. There might also be something this weekend. So we will get back to anyone on something this weekend, but there's one on the 28th. So we encourage everyone to come. It's terrific. It's wonderful for kids. Terrific event. Anything else?
February 28th, I'm sorry.
Yeah, February 28th at the high school, the MLK Room in Atrium. There's a lion dance, there's all sorts of fun things. Okay, also, the Brookline Climate Week is coming up, which is on here. Always another good educational event. Okay. The consent agenda. Do we have a motion for our past school committee meetings and legislative breakfast?
Seven.
Ms. Stone, seconded by Ms. Cox. All those in favor? It is unanimous.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Chalobski. And now a sad moment, which is we are saying farewell to our Chinese exchange students. Mr. Lantos.
Seems like we were just here.
It does.
I want to call up Ms. Lee, Lee Li Xia, who's been, who's had the hardest job of all bringing the eight students from our sister school, the Gaoxing Number One School in Xi'an. She's been tireless in working with the students and she's been there at every moment, 24/7. So I just, I would like to publicly just say thank you. I promised we would do this publicly.
Good evening, everyone. We have been here for five months. During the five months, we have learned a lot about American culture, traditions, and people. We had a wonderful time here. Now, I want to say thank you to the exchange program committee superintendent, Brookline High School, and Gaoxing Number One High School. Thanks a lot for providing such a good chance for us to experience American culture and lifestyle. I also want to say thank you to Steve. You are so kind and friendly and you helped us a lot. You have done a lot of things for us. And last, I want to say thank you to all the host families. You treat us as your family members and try your best to make us feel at home. And now, we regard you as our host families. Welcome to visit China in the future. We love you. Thank you very much. Now, I will introduce my students, Stella, Anna, and Jonathan, to say something. Thank you.
I am Stella. I'm honored to share, I'm honored to share my experience from my time in America. Five months passes so quickly that I feel as if I just came here five days ago. And I still remember so clearly, on the first day I came here, my host family held a well-decorated paper board with my, with my name on it. Outside, there were beautiful trees and brilliant sunset. Now, the scenery has changed. It is a season full of beautiful snow, and I know it's time to say goodbye. Recording the past five months, I think it's really a rewarding visit. I learned how to ski, skateboard, skate, how to cut a video, and how to speak French, which I found really interesting, and I will continue learning it after I go back to China. Up till now, I have visited Concord, Washington DC, Philadelphia, Maine, Niagara Falls, and New York City. Almost every weekend, we have trips and colorful activities, and they make me understand better about American history and culture. What I feel the luckiest is encountering these people who are so friendly and so sincere. I appreciate our good friend Steve for your extensive knowledge and your sense of humor. It was very nice of you to plan every trip schedule for us in advance, to drive us safely for hours and miles on trips, to tell us the history behind every attraction, and to teach us how to tell different constellations in the starry night. Thank you for leaving us all these beautiful and precious memories. I want to say thanks to our team leading teacher, Ms. Lee, for being a good listener of us and taking care of us all the time. I appreciate teachers Fu Zeng and Li Hua in room 200 for telling us the differences between Chinese culture and American culture, and talking to us like a big sister and big brother. I'm thankful to Mr. Kimball for organizing multiple Wednesday activities for Chinese and American exchange students. Thanks also to my teachers of my classes for helping me patiently and encouraging me when I'm not confident enough. Thank my schoolmates at BHS for explaining vocabularies that I don't know, for giving me a big smile when we meet at school, and make, that make me so, feel so warm. Thank you, everyone, in the Chinese and American groups. I cherish the precious and happy moments from when we stayed together. Thank you so much, every member of my host family, for treating me so sincerely like a true family member. Thank you for giving me a hug to comfort me before stepping into the haunted house. Thank you especially for fixing the broken door and making up room for my coming, for providing me different kinds of food to try, and making more of my favorite stuffed shells and meatballs. Thank you for giving me surprise gifts on festivals. I still keep the paper board with my name on it when we first met, and I will save it for life to commemorate this marvelous experience, because I believe that it is a lasting friendship beyond distance for life. Fifteen years is really a long time in one's life. It can make a young person become mature. Many things can be changed within 15 years, but the program is still going on like 15 years ago, and I know it is because people hand down the tradition firmly. Thank you, people who support this program, so that we have a chance to know each other. Thanks for your persistent on commitment. Thank you.
I'm Anna. This is my honor to stand here to give this speech to all of you. I appreciate everything I've seen, I've heard, I've been through in America. This is the reason I give this speech. This half of the year, even though I didn't grow up much taller, but I still feel the way that I grew up a lot. Thank you both my school and Brooklyn High School for giving me this such an amazing chance to come here to study in a completely different environment at this age. I've really been through a lot in America. Confusing, challenge, unable to understand, unable to be accustomed, but I overcome all of them, because among all these feelings, the most important is the warmth. The warmth is from my family. They really respect all my thoughts, they care about me for like everything. I think in a foreign country, I can find someone to share my life, to share my school things. I feel really fortunate to have you. Also, the warmth is from my classmates. Every time I want to give up, there are also some students to cheer me up. I really appreciate them. Also, they're all really talented people, like my sister, her drawing, and also the students from my music class. I'm really impressed that they can create the melodies by themselves. Also, my classmates from my drama class, they're really into every, everything to make it perfect. I still remember when I chose to join the dancing club, Popcorn. I had my best time in America with them. I remember we got sweating and falling down on the floor with them. I remember our first performance for paparazzi for the first time in front, in front of the whole school. I remember all of us were shaking slightly, but the group, the group hug, which I learned in America, really, really gradually calmed me down. I remember one of us said, once popcorn is forever popcorn, same as this school, I think. Maybe there are still much more about Brookline High School, like really, really wonderful things. I just don't have enough time to know all of them. It's such a pity for me. But for the last, but the most important, thank you, everyone, that involved this program, Gaoxing Number One Middle School and Brooklyn High School. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, my lovely host family, and also thank you, Zhang Lao Shi, thank you, Ms. Schrader. Also, I'm so grateful to my teacher for taking care of us for the whole five months. Thank you for this whole group. I cherish every one of you. Thank you.
I'm Jonathan, and it is an absolute honor of mine to speak here at this moment. I cannot imagine, or it is improbable for me to imagine, that I'm leaving so soon. The other three of us being here in September feels like just a moment ago, or right before I came up here, but it's been five months. People ask me the same question as soon as they are aware that I'm leaving. They ask me, what good things did you experience here in the United States? And it was always hard for me to answer, wow, because I couldn't summarize my five months to a person randomly. Five months is the length that we've stayed here, but it means way more than the length to me. But an undescribable experience, an unforgettable trip, and a significantly marked point on my life, a shining golden point. But now, I can answer, I can answer you, looking at you in the eyes, without any hesitation. It is the people here that matter, and it is the family here that matters a lot to me, that matters the most to me. I believed that family was an unchangeable, single soul thing, and once-in-a-lifetime thing, means there's no second chance. But I was totally wrong, because my second lifetime family is sitting right there, looking at me, listening to me speaking. I couldn't imagine being in this family, in this incredibly extraordinary family, being a son, a brother in this family, nor leaving you forever, which I'm not in the slightest going to do. As I'm always saying, I'll come back and be with you. I'll come back for the Thanksgiving we spent in North Carolina, for the Christmas we spent in West Virginia and Florida, and for having dinner at the tiny, little, cute table, and all we've done and will do after. And the base of all these above is that I could come here. So I thank you, schools, committees, and superintendents, for offering me this wonderful opportunity. I thank you, Lisa, for bringing me here. I thank you, Steve, for adding the bright parts to this already attractive trip. And most importantly, my sincere and endless gratitude to my family. Thank you.
I want to go back with them. There's some joy to this event also, in that we're also, four days after our Gaoxing students depart, we send our Brookline High School students off with our teacher leader, Andrew Kimball, who I'd like to call up here. And introduce the students who will be traveling to China for our now 15th year of exchange with the Gaoxing Number One School.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Andrew Kimball. I teach French and Spanish at the high school. While typically my lessons are about Europe and Latin America, this fall has mainly been about Asia and the anticipation building up to that. We've been preparing twice weekly, on Wednesday afternoons with social events with the Chinese students, and Thursday, X-Box with a slight academic component, which will really begin in earnest in the second semester. At this point, I'd like to introduce our eight participants. If you could all stand. We have Rachel Zank, Lily Hartman, Emma Chan, Karun Mahadevan, Rebecca Regis, Mac Feldstein-Nixon, Aiden Mallory, and Ada Levine. And as the semester winds down, as we prepare, we'll be doing one week of pre-departure work together in a seminar room, and then on Saturday, February 7th, we'll be taking our flight, Boston to Beijing and onwards to Shanghai, traveling for one week, and then arriving finally at the Gaoxing School on Saturday, February 15th. Thank you all for making this possible for us. We're very excited.
And before you know it, we'll be back in June to welcome them back. So thank all of you. Thank you.
Just real quickly, thank you, Steve. Thanks very much. And Andrew, thank you for your willingness to take part in this experience, and thanks to our students who are, who are on their way. And it's been a pleasure to have all of you here. Thank you so much, and thanks for those terrific words, really great, great remarks. Thank you so much.
I have requests from school committee members to bring a box of tissues, because we have some teary eyes up here, so. And it's a wonderful break from budgets and buildings, which is what we normally talk about.
Yes.
So thank you very much for coming. You're welcome to stay, but we understand if perhaps you have other things to do with your evening here. So we'll give you a moment. Okay. Our next agenda item is public comment. There's, nobody signed up to make public comment. Is there anyone here who wishes to make public comment? Seeing none, we will move on.
[laughter]
To our, to our student report. Mr. Khan.
Thank you.
What do you have for us this evening?
Well, it's been a big few weeks for legislature. Last time I, we were here, I talked about, we passed a bill that was going to give several homework free weekends a year. We went to faculty council to talk about it, and they expressed concerns about how it would end up affecting teaching, and ultimately it was vetoed. But the conversation's going to continue. Ms. Holman is putting the task on two of the department heads to research and look into like how homework and stress affects students, and review we've done, and hopefully we'll pass something. And legislature and student council, we're not quite sure how we're going to proceed with it. We talked about it during our meeting today, but once, once we know, I'll get back to you. And then also, last week, there was the MLK Assembly, which was really great. And there's lots of different performances and speeches, especially Dean Alexander's keynote speech. It was really good, and it revitalized the discussion for a lot of school about diversity in Brookline. And hopefully, these conversations will be sustained, especially by the day of assemblies in March on this topic, which I'm really looking forward to, and there's been a lot of planning and going on. And I think one of the important things they're going to focus on is the, the differences between the appearance and the actuality of diversity in Brookline, and it's all really important, so I know I've talked about this a lot. And in other news, we have midterms next week, which we're all super excited for. And last week, there was revisions, which is a really high-quality variety show, which is lots of different talents, from dance to music, all that. And then Hairspray is coming. It's the high school, it's the musical that will be in February, and that should be excellent. And the global trips are heading out over February vacation, which they're going to Cambodia, Spain, and Sojourn is going down south. I'm not exactly sure where, but. What?
In France.
I think.
France.
Oh, the France trip also? Okay. In France. France. That's all.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Khan, Ms. Chalobski.
Yeah, no, we had just approved the France trip. That's why.
For next year.
For next year.
The one we just approved was for next year.
Stand corrected. I actually saw a T-shirt, the new T-shirts with the logos, and I was wondering if next time you might bring that to us to show to the rest of the committee, because they might be interested in seeing.
It might be interesting purchasing one.
Maybe even that. I think you can do that online, actually.
You can.
There's some sort of site, there was a connection that I saw, but I'm not sure where I saw it.
Yeah, there's actually a lot of T-shirts that we've seen, we're pretty excited about it.
Good.
We're excited.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Khan. We are being very efficient this evening. We might have time at the end for subcommittee reports, which we nix, because they usually take too long, but let's keep rolling along. Dr. Lupini.
Thank you. You should have a copy of the report. I actually have one item to, to add. First item is that Brookline is one of 11 districts that have been awarded a Massachusetts Creativity and Innovation Initiative grant. Purpose of these new state-funded, two-year competitive funding opportunities is to foster student creativity and capacity for innovation, critical for success in the 21st century economy. More specifically, this funding opportunity supports the review, design, and implementation of middle and/or high school curricula that promote essential skills while improving students' academic achievement and engagement. The grant was actually put together in cooperation with Amy Martin from our grants office by a number of teachers who were involved in the STEAM, the Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Mathematics Work Group, as part of Brookline High School 2020. That group is being led by Aubrey Love, Ron Taylor, and Andrew Magathen, of someone from science, math, and visual arts, and they have envisioned a project-based curriculum for students involved in our Physics 1 and Geometry class that's described here, that culminates in the creation of an actual mini golf course, to be open to the public, primarily our students, at the end of the school year for a day of play and feedback. So I want to thank those people for their willingness to be involved in this particular grant, Amy Martin for her work, and also Ed Weiser and Josh Paris, the two curriculum coordinators who are involved in supervising this work and the event. Our staff and community surveys are open through the end of the day tomorrow. We actually extended that by a few days. Participation has been brisk during this last week, we're pleased to report, and we should have final participation rates on Monday, and school-based reports will be published, made available to principals and school councils, and made public in early February. On Thursday, February 5th, all of our sixth graders will select their world language for 2015, 2016. Yes, we're to that point of the year also already. Parents of sixth graders, students will receive a letter next week via Blackboard Connect describing the process and timeline, and for the first time ever, we're doing this using an online tool. The other item I have for you is one I just received late this afternoon. One of our students from the Baker School, Adrian Lin Seager, won a contest through the Mass Municipal Association, and will be recognized tomorrow night. Tomorrow and Saturday is MMA's annual event. Tomorrow night's their dinner, and Adrian will be recognized tomorrow at their award dinner. He won the annual sixth grade essay contest. That contest kicked off last month with school principals receiving an enrollment form. The, let's see, then when principals find people who are interested in entering, they forward contest materials. Participating sixth graders describe what they would do as an elected leader of their city or town to make it a better place to live. The essay contest encourages students to reflect on the role of key elected officials as well as municipal activities, and Adrian Lin Seager won the award this year, sixth grader from the Baker School, and will be recognized at their dinner tomorrow night.
Just to ask the obvious question, Ms. Chalobski.
I have this, that's what I have right now.
No, no. But I was going to suggest is maybe we invite Adrian to our next meeting to, if it's not too long, a paper, to read it.
Or summarize it.
Or summarize it.
Great.
But at least to, to celebrate.
I think that's an excellent idea. I'd also like to actually read the paper.
Yeah, thank you.
If the paper could be, if the essay could be circulated to us, that would be.
Happy to do that. Again, I got this at four, four o'clock this afternoon, so. Thank you, that's my report.
All right, questions for the superintendent, Mr. Glover.
Very briefly, how much is the Creativity and Innovation Initiative grant? Do we know that?
Do you know the amount of that grant? $15,000?
Thank you.
Sorry. The question was the amount of the grant, and the grant is for, we believe, $15,000.
Any other questions? All right, moving right along. Thank you. Moving along to our school committee, proposed action, proposed vote to approve the FY16 budget guidelines. Mr. Chang.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move it. Oh, go ahead. No, no, go on, it's fine.
Second.
A second.
I.
Do you want to take any to see if there's discussion? Or no, he doesn't. We can just vote it.
Will you take, will you take a moment to see if there's any discussion?
So first of all, Mr. Chang, I am so envious of your approach. I think our meetings would be substantially shorter if I took your approach to vote-taking. I have much to learn. Apparently, we're not discussing this. Excellent. All those, are you calling for the vote?
Any discussions? Guess not.
Since, since the committee has spent so much time creating a document this year that is designed more than in the past to be a public document and a real statement for the community, especially as we try to do public education in anticipation of an override, and talking about the various challenges that we face, I'm wondering whether we have a different plan for how we're going to get this out to the community. It is a substantially longer document than we've done in the past. It has graphs, as was requested by some of our advisory committee friends and colleagues, and I just, I, I know it'll be available on the website. I just wonder whether there's, there's a lot of information in here that, that as I get stopped or talked to on the telephone by people in town, there are answers to questions that we are frequently getting these days in this document, and so I wondered whether we had a plan for dissemination.
First, I've been asked the question. So the, I mean, normally what we've done is post to the website. We've put it out through Twitter. I mean, all of our documents this year, anything that comes out of these meetings, I put out, the school districts put out. And then there's a decision point on, on any documents as to whether we send them out via Blackboard Connect. That's a, that's a pretty hefty distribution to every parent in the district, so, not that it's difficult, it's just, I don't know if it fits into the, sort of the category of documents that we normally do that with.
Yeah, I guess I was thinking more about making sure that we... Yeah, I guess I was thinking more about making sure that we send it through to the TMMA, to the advisory committee.
We don't have access to TMMA.
Perhaps some of us on the town meeting could take care of that. But as I said, this is more than just our budget guidelines, as we've done them in the past, and especially the data that's included. Again, there are tremendous questions out there about the cost of the schools, the nature of the enrollment, the span of time that's represented by the needs that have been represented, the $12 million that we talk about. I got a call just today asking whether that was an annual need or something else. So there is a lot of, just to be clear, it's not $12 million a year. $12 million is the accumulated deficit that we are attempting, the three-year deficit that was put forward. So anyway, I just wanted to say it out loud. I'm sorry I missed the meeting last week, and so I don't know, maybe you've discussed all of these things. But in reviewing the document, it just seems that there's a tremendous amount of information in here that people have been waiting for, and we need to get it out to them.
I don't have an immediate answer to that, but as I was reading it, I did think it was a really good summary of some of the issues that we've been dealing with for several years and a really good encapsulation of our thinking around them. And thinking that it would be a really wonderful time for our school committee website to get launched, which is supposed to happen in the next month. And one of the things we talked about there was having a page called Major Reports, which this would fit really nicely in, and we could refer people to.
Right.
But we have to get it up.
We're hoping by February vacation and, right, we've taken another look at that page where, thank you, because that simplifies my life, because now we're the ones trying to get all those documents out of meetings, but we'll put them all there.
Then we can start pointing people there for the major thing, the things that we're looking at as we're making decisions.
The only thing, I sort of agree with Ms. Stone, though, about this particular one. I would be careful about conflict of interest here, and if there, you know, there would be some problem with that, I would probably want to run it by town council to make sure that we're not using the public email to do any. I think what we're using it for is to provide information, and that's certainly 100% fine, but just to be on the safe side, so. But I do think it's important for people to know this information, and unfortunately, as much as a website is great, people have to go to it. Whereas with the Blackboard Connect, people get it. They can decide not to read it, but they at least get it. And so it makes, it takes one step out of the process. I don't know. I mean, if.
So why don't we?
We can discuss it, but it's just.
I mean, there are a variety of different dissemination mechanisms we have. This is not an override document. This is the school committee's budget guidelines.
I agree.
So whether it's useful to people all sorts of places is fine, but, I mean, there are sort of different groups in town, right? There's the TMMA, and there's the advisory committee and the selectmen, sort of our elected folks. There's the website, there's social media, but not only Facebook for the town, but there's a parent Facebook page. Twitter, obviously, there are PTOs. There are, I mean, so we kind of have a variety of mechanisms. So maybe one thing we can, we don't need to hive mind this right now. We can just figure it out.
I'm good with that.
Oh, Mr. Chang, I love you. Go ahead.
We have a second? Aye? One absent. Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Chang. Well shepherded. All right. We are now on our presentations and discussions of current issues. First up is our elementary world language program.
Just a quick word. So I know this, Dawn Carney discussed this report with the curriculum subcommittee. You should know that Dawn's also was nice enough to come and talk with, about the program and some of the initial data around our nearly full implementation of the program with the parent leaders group, and did a terrific job there. And so we're really pleased this evening, as we get near the point, right, Dawn, of full implementation of the program over the full number of years. We're almost there, to have Dawn here to talk with you about the program, about some of those implementation issues, about some of the initial data of some assessments that we've begun to put in place, all of those kinds of things. And so she's done a really terrific job of putting this together and talking with people about our successes and some of our challenges. And we're thrilled to have her here tonight to do that with you as well. Go on.
I should say that yesterday was our sixth-year anniversary, about six years ago. And the last time I was here was also in January. It's always this meeting that I come, and we're celebrating an anniversary. But that was pretty exciting, that yesterday we marked, the group that is with us now in the sixth grade is the first cohort to have had K through six world language. So thank you for having me this evening. And before I even start, I just am going to flash here our mission statements. And the vision, mission, core values, the goals of the strategic plan, all really speak directly to having a robust K through 12 world language program. Our students are developing linguistic and cultural proficiency, and they were before the elementary program. But now we can really look toward a fully articulated program, K through 12, and gains in both of those areas. So just to let you know what the presentation will address tonight, we're just going to walk through, really, the history, the current status, if you will. Bill referenced already some assessment results that we have. And the future, what are our next steps, what do we still have left to do? So we are now in our seventh year, and as I said, we just marked the sixth anniversary yesterday. So really, just get us grounded in what is the program, what are our goals, and what should students be able to do? I'm sorry, I just skipped a slide there. Yeah, I'm sorry. We've got a, this is a, it's the wrong, it's the wrong presentation. So I am, I have it in my Dropbox. Excuse me. Can I access my Dropbox from here? I apologize. We had a technical difficulty earlier.
Yes. So the situation we have right now is that this presentation that's on this flash drive is actually a earlier draft. So I'm wondering if a subcommittee report or two might fill in while Dawn accesses her Dropbox.
Can I take this?
She could continue our discussion of the budget guidelines, if you wish, because that seems to be a never-ending source. Mr. Chang, perhaps you can.
Madam Chairman, I actually had a question for the superintendent on his report, which I didn't think of in time to ask it. So if I can get back to that report, I can ask it. Oh, you mentioned that we're doing the language signup, foreign language signup for. Online. What does that improve in terms of our ability to assign kids, hire staff? What does that give us that we didn't have before when it wasn't done online?
Gives us data in a more timely fashion. Gives principals data in a more timely fashion. So the discussion, and more and more as our enrollment's grown, right, has been about numbers of sections. Quite frankly, in some schools, we've been challenged with, in French in particular, about whether we had enough students to run classes, et cetera. And so this just, instead of doing it by paper and someone having to work with all of that and chase down people who haven't yet turned in the forms, this tells us at a moment's notice what the numbers look like, who hasn't filled that out, so that we can get to them, get that information as quickly as possible. It's a quicker turnaround. Gives us better data quicker in terms of making hiring decisions and knowing where we may have challenges in terms of numbers of sections.
Terrific. Thank you.
While we are spinning for time, the other thing that I will mention is that last night was the Metco Forum with parents. It was incredibly well-attended. There were probably 75 parents there, just guessing. It's on BATV if anyone's interested. But the one other piece that was mentioned as part of the override study committee process was the cost of the Metco program. And as you all know, because you're here, we regularly lobby our legislators about the reimbursement rate of the Metco program and have asked, you know, for it to be at school choice reimbursement rates, which might be perhaps a bit of a stretch, but we ask anyway. The other thing that happens is the Metco Lobby Day, which this year is on Thursday, March 19th. And Representative Jeffrey Sanchez was there last night and had an opportunity to talk to the Metco parents about how important it was to make their voices heard and to make sure that the reimbursement rate, just to advocate for the program and how important it is. And a flyer was distributed, if any of you is interested, Thursday, March 19th. Rally begins at 9:00 in the morning at the Massachusetts State House. And we always have a number of people who go from the school committee, and there are legislator visits as well as a part of this. So if anyone has questions, just be aware that that is something that we continually advocate for and will this year, no doubt, as well as we face a $750 million, $700 and something million. $765 million budget gap at the state level. So that's an important one as well.
Can I just say on the conversation you're having before, while we have a moment, I mean, the issue for me of Blackboard Connect is the all nature of it, right? And when we contracted for that service, one of the things that we were cognizant of, and I live in a community that has a different view of this, and so, right, so it was how often we used it and for what we used it. And so, you know, last year, when we were beginning to explore some of these things a little fuller, we were looking at some districts that had actually offered parents the opportunity to get on certain mailing lists. Are you interested in budget information? Are you interested in program information about this or this? And we were on our way to starting to create that differentiation. That, to me, is a very different way of looking at this. Putting that out to, I think, the 900 and some, we try to minimize the number of times that we do that. But I do believe that over the course of the spring, with some strategies that we've talked about employing over the next couple of months, we're going to be able to get back to that conversation about that differentiation of communication. And so under those kind of conditions, I'd be all for it. It's really the all nature of Blackboard Connect. And as I said, I live in a district where we get daily information over Blackboard Connect. And it's a lot. And we don't use it that way, but.
And we don't use it that way, and I actually approve of that, because I think it tends to worry people when they get Blackboard Connect, if they get an all-points bulletin. It feels like it ought to be, it ought to be a really, really important reason to get everybody's attention like that. No, my point was really, it's just that there are, it was not so much about the schools' community, although there's a lot in the document that's important to them, the questions about, you know, especially in a failed or no override situation, you know, the kinds of things that the school committee has committed to in this document in terms of saying, we recognize that there are programs that we like a lot, that we value hugely, that will be, in fact, inevitably looked at for cuts or reductions, class sizes going up, additional fees where we've already imposed them, you know, all the things that we've been talking about that are very uncomfortable and difficult for the community to hear and certainly difficult for us to commit to any kinds of changes that would affect the delivery of services. But in this document, we name them, and it's important that people see that.
What we will do, what we've done with a number of, the one thing I didn't mention, is that when we create those kinds of releases through Twitter, we provide all of our newsletters, all of our PTO newsletters with a blurb and a link. So the link comes right out of my Google Docs, right, so people can link to that, because I've made it accessible to anyone who has the link. So we've done that. That's been very successful, because all of our PTOs that publish anything take those things from us, put them in. And it'll say, if you're interested in the budget guidelines, just click here. They're available to you.
We can also ask the town, perhaps, to put it out on its social media since the school budget, yeah, I mean, the school budget is always a hot topic for everyone. How do we do?
I'm very glad. This is not my first school committee presentation. For those of you for whom it is my first school committee presentation, I promise you, all of the other ones were smooth. You have a copy of a PowerPoint, which is not the PowerPoint that I'm sharing with you. And the copy that I have here has some notes on it, so we're not going to make a copy of that. So absolutely, everyone will have access to it, but what you have in front of you is a version, but not exactly what I'm presenting to you this evening. Okay, so pretending like none of that happened, starting with a little bit of history, what is the program and the curriculum development, right? What are our program goals and what should our students be able to do? So our goals very specifically are, of course, to develop oral proficiency in the target language. And across K through eight, that proficiency is in the other skill areas, but when we're talking specifically about the elementary program, oral proficiency is the objective. Developing students as language learners, that was really a learning for us. That wasn't a stated goal in the advisory committee proposal. And we have really learned what that looks like and what that means, and it's helping us in the elementary grades, K through five, having two adults working together in a classroom to support students. What does it mean and look like for each of us? Me as the world language teacher, or me as a classroom teacher. And for all language programs also, developing awareness and understanding of different cultures is, you cannot speak a language without truly understanding its culture, so those go hand in hand. Our program, just a quick slide to make sure we're all clear on what we're talking about. In K through six, we have one language per school, Spanish, in all of our schools except for Driscoll, that's had a Chinese program that existed before the system-wide program. And seventh and eighth grade, then, of course, there are those continuing languages in those schools. And we also have an opportunity for students to start another, a different language, to switch. And in six of our schools, that language is French. At Driscoll, the other language is Spanish. And at Pierce, the other language is Chinese. So we have a K five and a six-through-eight model, if you will, so we have two models. We have a total of three different languages in K through eight. And that really breaks up into like five different working groups, although in the continuing, in the seventh and eighth grade, there's continuing and beginning languages. They're almost little subgroups, but those groups work together. This slide is complicated, and we developed this to show at the beginning of the program really where we were. So again, the exciting part is, you know, you be, here's where we are today, that we have, we're in year seven, and in grades K through six, we have fully-developed curriculum. And it's the first year that we have fully-developed curriculum in grades K through six. These numbers here are indicating, you know, in year four, for example, all of the students in grades three through six were at the same place in their language learning. And this darker red line is the permanent curriculum, and this curriculum is still temporary. So you can see that there's just been, it's continual change in curriculum, continual development. In grade seven and eight, it's not as marked, you know, with the steps. Now the point is not working. But we have been working on not only making sure that we had a consistent temporary curriculum, and then as we're making curriculum changes, that they are permanent, if you will, slow and steady. Again, it's not as marked, but we're tweaking and adjusting year for year. And in two years from now, that's when that permanent curriculum will be in place. This slide really articulates the work that has been done during those seven years that you can't see in that chart. The first bullet really is very profound. Integrating a K through six program into our school system was something that needed to be done carefully and thoughtfully, because as I referenced, having two teachers working together in a classroom, that was something that never existed before. We don't have big models for that. We don't know, you know, we don't have that in Brookline. So of all of the different models that we have, where teachers might be in a classroom working together, this is the only one where there is a teacher standing up and delivering instruction and content in a different language also, and the other teacher is participating in a way that we had to define. And that really speaks to, I think, the strength of. And that really speaks to, I think, the strength of adult learning, professional learning, and collaborative relationships in Brookline. We continue to work on that, but that was big, and we spent a lot of time and a lot of thought and a lot of working in professional development to do that well together with the classroom teachers. We worked with the schools quite intentionally that first year. All of this other work is understanding, what does oral proficiency mean? How do we know how to teach for that? How do we learn how to teach for that? How do we learn how to do that in grades K through five? How do we do that a little bit differently in grades six through eight? We established targets for our program. The curriculum development, again, annual, and it's still taking place. We have, we've focused on performance tasks, so that is, you know, having students use the language, not writing grammar-based tests, not worrying about what they can tell us about the language and how it works, but actually using it. Since the program started, we also shift sixth grade to the middle grades model. That meets three times a week for 45 minutes. And consistently over the years, but with an emphasis on the past three years, there's been a lot of more meaningful and deeper conversations about the articulations from grades eight through nine. And the high school is now really in the throes of big changes to their curriculum. Proficiency targets. We've set proficiency targets. It seems like a natural thing to do, but in fact, I've never worked in a school district before here that had set proficiency targets. Our state frameworks are from 1999 and don't serve as a good beacon for us anymore. And while the national standards are what we use, it doesn't exactly tell you how to set targets because there's so many, you know, different models and amount of time that students study. We've been working with a consultant, and he, that's a quote from him right there. This setting of proficiency targets has changed everything for us because now we're working to deeply understand the proficiency levels, what do they mean, what do they look like, and design instruction and assessments to meet those kinds of targets. Greg also says that he believes there's about 5% of school districts in the United States doing that kind of work. So that's inspiring and discouraging to me as a world language professional at the same time, but that's what we've grounded, how we've grounded ourselves. So what data do we have? We have one, we have one data point. And in world language, again, this is a big deal because there are only two assessments that exist that are proficiency-based assessments, that are standardized assessments. And we piloted one several years ago, and last year, we administered the Apple assessment to the seventh-grade students. So the acronym for Apple is there on the bottom of the screen, and it is a test that is designed by the national organization. We have, I'm sorry. There we go, okay. This one is working now, yep. So here is, right, so there's the acronym. I'm not having luck with this pointer, Jennifer, sorry. So these are our results for seventh-grade students who were in continuing language. The, so there's a lot of numbers here, a lot of colors. What do we see? There's the, along the bottom here, on the x-axis, we can see that it's the skill areas of foreign language, and then just the proficiency levels are articulated for you on the side. Two things of note that I just want to point out, the grouping of the intermediate range is because novice high is in the intermediate range, so that's a little bit confusing for folks. And our anticipated target last year was that students would be novice high and above. So this data for us, particularly when we're looking at speaking, which is the area that we are most interested in due to the focus of the elementary program, we were pleased to see that we are in, you know, primarily in the 70% in the intermediate range. We have 11% at that intermediate mid, which is our long-term target. However, last year's seventh-grade students were in year six of their learning, so that target is for 2016 plus. And this year is the first year of the permanent, if you will, seventh-grade curriculum. So we're optimistic that we're going to continue to make strides, and we're certainly happy that we have folks at least in novice high. And we're looking at this very much like we look at our Armcast data and say, "What do we need to do to get our novice mids into the novice high? And what do we do to have our novice highs up into the next one?" Thank you. Third time's a charm. Okay. So I apologize. None of my technology is working with me this evening. So this is the most important category for us. What you can see in the others is that we are also in the intermediate range and above. The other information that we were able to gather, just to have some feedback on our program, was to survey the teachers in grades seven through nine who have been here for a number of years. And this data right here is, this didn't import correctly from a Mac computer, perceived changes in proficiency across all language skills. So that's across the four skills of speaking, listening, reading, and writing. And we have overwhelmingly, teachers are saying that the students are more proficient or a lot more proficient. That's the teacher perception in their language learning in entirety. We separated that out also, just to look at speaking and listening, and you can see there, again, that's the focus of the elementary program in grades K through five. So teachers in seven through nine, 100% of them are reporting that their students are more proficient or a lot more proficient at speaking and listening, and we have more in the, a lot more. And there are just some teacher quotes there, which sort of, you know, illuminate that, those perceptions. So these are only, it is a perception survey, so what we're excited about is having now this Apple data that we can track over time to really calculate our performance and see if we're meeting our benchmarks and hopefully achieving those targets. So what do we still have left to do? We have learned lots over the past years, and we already have articulated some steps about what's next. So we realize deeply that having an annually-changing curriculum has a profound impact on teachers because nobody is teaching one grade level. And teachers who are teaching in grades five through eight have had continual, have had continual curriculum development changes, and there's certainly a level of fatigue that accompanies that. And we have a small pool of teachers from whom we can call to do all of this curriculum work, and again, it's across three languages. We also know that both the system and the department commitment to that professional learning has been critical. We have been able to work with a consultant for a number of years, and teachers are given time to work together and come together to reflect on how is this instruction effective and what else do we need to do? As much as curriculum and assessments are important, we know that it's the day-in, day-out instruction that matters, and we're at that level where we're saying, "Here's our data. What do we want to change in our activities? What do we want to do to target that level of language in our students, to always target intermediate output?" We have, we've spent time to really develop leadership in our teachers. We have many, 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 many teachers who have worked on curriculum in some way, shape, or form from the K-through-eight World Language team. However, there are some who have been consistently involved from the beginning, and they've really become leaders, and we've developed them as leaders to not only help their colleagues here, but to take on leadership roles outside. We've had three teachers that presented in our fall conference, our state conference, and another teacher just actually submitted a proposal for our national conference next year. So that's exciting. Brookline's doing good work. There was the president of our national organization who said, "That should be adaptable." And that's pretty exciting at 8:00 AM on a Friday morning when you're presenting. So the work that we're doing is not unimportant. As Greg mentioned, that 5% in the country, I think it's important for our teachers to know that and to have a voice and to share their work. And certainly, in 2008, when I was starting, I was calling everybody and anybody with elementary school experience. And fortunately, everybody calls you back because those who work in elementary world language are passionate and committed about it, and they know that it's a hard, it's a hard sell in many places, and they've worked in districts where they've been cut or they've been reduced, or they have hung on by the skin of their teeth. We're no longer the only program. Lexington is now just, they have, all of next year is going to be their research to have their program in place for the following year. Wellesley is starting a program next year. We have been visited by three or four school systems already this year. Our appearance at the conference generated a lot of interest, and over the years, every district that has started a program has come to visit. Dover-Shoreburn just successfully started their program, I believe they're in year two. And I worked with that committee and have just collaborated a little bit with that teacher and curriculum writer. So we're no longer the only ones, which is exciting, and we're a leader. People are coming to look here and see what they can learn from our teachers and our work. And this is why, this is what a model program is. This is a quote directly here from the consultant we've worked with. Setting targets, designing the curriculum to meet the targets, assessments to meet the targets, standardized assessments, external assessments, and significant professional development. That's what it takes to set up a successful program, and that's what we've done. That's what's exciting. To me, that's what I'm really passionate and excited about because if we didn't, we started without all of this in place. Here's where we are now. So our roadmap is clear. It didn't start clear. It wasn't pretty from the beginning, but this is where we are now, and all of the learning that has happened is serving us well, and we're able to work within this framework. We have the architecture to build an incredibly strong K-through-12 program. So the learning that came from the elementary program has absolutely impacted beyond grades K through six. And the work left ahead for us, this year, we are anticipating an oral proficiency interview for fifth-grade students. It's not a standardized test, it's a face-to-face test, so we would have a very small sample. But it's a different kind of test that really can be a little bit more tailored to the content that the students have learned, and it's user-friendly in the way that it's designed for fifth-grade elementary school students. We still have grade seven and eight curriculum development in front of us, just to get us to that level place of where we have a full K-through-eight articulated program. We still have work to do to meet the needs of our heritage speakers in grades K through five and successfully support new students in K through five. And I say that from a systematic level, just developing documents and resources that we have just in a bank to hand out to folks. We've been building that along the way, but it's awfully hard to do it all, all at once. We're exploring changes in the schedule of the program in grade six. Should it be the year that students start their world language for grades six, seven, and eight? And should that be five times a week instead of three times a week? Or, and/or, but both of those are topics we're exploring. And we're also exploring the language choices in grades six through eight. Where are our numbers waning? What, how many languages can we reasonably offer, should they be the same throughout all of the school system? And we're working on our internal and external assessment plan, again, having that clearly articulated from K through 12. What might the oral interview process be? What grade levels would it make sense to have that kind of intervention? What grade levels could we do? A portion of the Apple assessment and assess some skills, but not all skills, but over the course of K through 12, have them all assessed at regular intervals. And then what do we want to make sure our internal assessments are doing? And that's very different at the high school where they have a midterm schedule than in grades six through eight. This last quote I will leave you with is from our national standards, and I think I use this quote on every presentation because it really is just, it sums it up beautifully. Our vision, mission, and core values in Brookline completely mesh with what we are talking about in the standards, and we're talking about teaching foreign languages. This is what we're all working to do together. Well, that's that.
Good. Thank you so much, Dawn, for the tremendous work that you've done to get this up and running and pull this presentation together. I know you've been through it a couple of times, so some people have had their questions answered, but just in case, are there other questions that folks want to ask about the program? Ms. Stone?
You know you could count on me, and I actually was at the curriculum subcommittee meeting, so I will try not to repeat myself, but thank you so much for this. I've been a big supporter ever since we passed the override for this program, and it's very exciting to see it developing in this way. I am particularly interested, as you know, because we talked about it at curriculum, in whether or not we're seeing the changes or will be seeing the changes in the kids as they get to the high school. And you did mention that the high school was embarking now on big changes to their curriculum, and I wonder if you could say a little bit more about that? Is that due to the already better preparation of the students coming out of the K8s? Or is it in anticipation that they will be better prepared and therefore they have to get ahead of that?
No, it's in reaction to, as a result of. So the two honors and two advanced are the courses that have been the most impacted because that's where our students, who are more prepared, are landing. And they have, they have, I can't speak in detail about what they have changed, but they have entirely revamped their curriculum. Last year, that's where they decided to devote all of their energy. That's where they saw the biggest need, and from one year to the next even. What was anticipated wasn't enough. While we are clearly articulating what our curriculum has and what is changing, it's almost like you can't feel it substantively enough in the written curriculum. And then when the students arrive, and it's that much harder for us to measure accurately their proficiency in what they can do with the language. So it's not so much about the grammar, it's their capacity to already function at this level and then insert not only grammar in content. So they were anticipated, they anticipated some of the content, but what the performance of the students really drove far more changes than they were anticipating.
And that's already not just from the kids, so, because we don't have kids at the high school yet who started in kindergarten, so this is...
Not in kindergarten, but they are there, who started in grades three, four.
Right, right.
Three and four.
Right. And is there, does that mean, so if, in fact, it continues, that the preparation is stronger and that we have more students as class sizes also grow, or grade sizes grow, and we go into, does this have budget implications for world language at the high school in terms of who we have in place to teach?
I can't, I truly can't answer that. You know, I could surmise, but I don't know, I just don't know enough about the department and the courses and the staffing. Members are members. What I can say is that I would anticipate there would be a shift in who's in which courses, and I don't, I haven't engaged with the high school yet about what do we want to call those courses? We're focused on what we're actually teaching in those courses. So I'm sorry, I just, I can't speak to that articulately.
Well, the one piece I will add is just even over the last two to three years, and you may have a more specific comment than this, I know, I know we've seen an increase in student enrollment, just as a base, right? And so, that has more to do with students, because we have a graduation requirement, so it's not impacted there. What, where it's impacted is students continuing beyond that requirement, number one, or number two, participating in another language. So that, that we have seen because a lot of the requests around contingency for FTEs at the high school has come in world language. And you might want to add?
One specific I will add is that the high school coordinator, Anyas Alvaroala, has prepared a proposal for this budget season that includes the professional development, the curriculum development, materials and supplies, all that is needed to now accept students who are doing better. So yes, there's budgetary impact there, which we are quite happy to see.
Right, exactly.
And then number two, very similar to our other disciplines, we have teachers who are skilled to such a degree, they could teach at all these varying levels. And so, in fact, as the students come in more proficient, the teachers are there and far beyond, so they can move throughout.
Okay, great. Thank you. That is an area where Anyas and I have collaborated a great deal, is talking about the budget. And what, you know, what I'm saying to her is, "Here's all what you're going to need to do." You know, I'm happy to, happy to hand over all of this learning, and we've been doing it together, but really now the impact we can see is, they, that's the budgetary effect is they need far more, more time for curriculum development.
Thank you.
I want to thank you also. We had the privilege of having a preview of this beforehand, so that we were up to speed. And I wanted to share with the rest of the committee a comment that I heard from a Spanish teacher at the high school, Liz Gorman, who said, "Her students are coming in so much more willing to take chances in a language, whereas before they would be much more reticent," that she has seen a huge difference. she has seen a huge difference in the way, how prepared the students are as they get in and where she's able to take them. So I must say, you know, I remember when we first started talking about having world language back before the override and, you know, the first time around, and it never really, we didn't get far enough at that point. And then to see this come to fruition is really amazing. And amazing to see how Brookline is seen in terms of this and how, how other high-performing districts are emulating us is really a real tribute to the work, hard work, Dawn, that you've done. And I know that it has not been easy and that you've put in many hours in terms of doing this, and so I want to thank you on behalf of all of us.
I landed in the right place. I'm delighted to, it's a, it's a, it's a pleasure and a treat to work in the school system that supports world languages.
Mr. Shane?
Again, thank you very much for the presentation. Really helpful for me to hear this, I wasn't at the, what is it, curriculum? Yeah. How long have you been with Brookline and this world language program?
I've been here, this is my seventh year, so I came
Oh, really? Okay.
When this, with the override, with the new program, with this position. I'm the first K through eight world language curriculum coordinator.
So in that period of time, could you comment on kind of teacher retention in this, in our system? Because obviously, for teachers, teaching elementary world language is, is a different skill set than teaching adults, right?
Yes.
More mature. So could you comment a little bit about that? Obviously, I'm assuming there is usual number of movements, right, in and out. But in general, could you give me some color around that?
At one point, it was probably, three years ago, I was, you know, we had 70% of our original staff at one point of the newly hired K through six folks.
This is three years ago?
Several years ago.
Several, okay.
And that, I don't have that number off the top of my head. We've had a great deal of fluctuation. And I don't know, I've never looked to actually compare at the system level, the department level, transitions at the system level, to compare them to the system level, excuse me. What I can tell you is I'm always, there's always a surprise about somebody leaving, right? It's that I'm getting married, I'm moving to Texas, two people have moved to Texas in the past few years, you know, life events. And this year, I remember having the conversation with Jennifer and my husband, saying, you know, I have seven staff to hire, you know, what's wrong? Nothing's wrong. You know, there was a life event, there, somebody moved, two of our teachers, one moved to the high school. So we sent an incredible liaison, is how I look at her for our transition and articulation. And another teacher stayed in Brookline but became an ELL teacher. She had been a Spanish and an ELL teacher for years. So we have, I don't know if it's more or less, but it seems to me to be pretty much on track. Last year was a big year. We had, we had a lot of life events. We had a lot of life events, people, you know, choosing to not work for family reasons, and two folks, you know, transitioning in our school system.
The reason, this is interesting. The reason is, as you said, there's only five, 5% of the schools, is it in the country or in the state?
Country.
In the country, that has this program. So teachers that's trained for that, I would assume, have very few places to go to.
Right here to Brookline for the best training. So, you know, what are the challenges for us as educators in supporting new teachers to, you know, we hire, we have exceptional hiring practices here in Brookline. Everybody, you know, we're incredibly rigorous. When I, when I think about how we hire in world language, I'm always involved in that. We are, we're extremely rigorous. We don't hire anybody who isn't proficient in the language regardless of their licensure. So your licensure qualifies you as highly qualified, but we, we have, we make sure our folks can speak the language before we even bring them in for an interview. We don't want to fall in love with a great teacher whose language skills just aren't good enough yet. So we bring folks in and we have a really rigorous interview process, I can tell you, because I've designed the questions. But what it gets at is if the folks, what they don't have yet, what do they learn through that interview process and what are they willing to learn? And I think it's those characteristics of teachers is what we hire on. We don't get anybody perfect. I wasn't perfect when I came, I'm not perfect now. But what are the skills that we want to see in teachers? And in world language, we get at that. What do we want to see in them in world language? And we've provided an extraordinary amount of professional development. We will need to continue to provide extraordinary professional development for world language. I think that's, unfortunately, you know, until I can go and fix everything at the colleges, that's what we're going to do.
Thank you.
Dawn, I have a question, and I have a comment on the sixth grade that maybe you can join me on. But the question is, to this, to this issue, I mean, we've talked, we've talked regularly from way back to the beginning about the challenges, and you mentioned it in terms of licensure, and teaching elementary versus teaching middle or, or high school, and some of the things that we've learned in that area. Can you just talk for a moment about that?
Sure. So we, we absolutely, let me start by saying that our teachers right now are stronger than they've ever been. Our, our department, so to speak to your point there also, Ben. That, the training has, has worked, right? And we've hired folks who are interested in professional learning and adult learning and are, and are excited. They're like, yeah, we have proficiency targets, yeah, we have data. The teachers jumped at the chance to pilot the assessments. They were like, bring it on. We want to, you know, we want to make sure it's the appropriate tool for our kids, but we, we want to see what we're doing and make sure that we're doing what we're trying to do. So elementary teaching requires you to be, to have all of those expert skills that we would want you to have as a, as a world language teacher, so a teacher of foreign languages, and also a whole set of elementary school skills. And that's where we have taken our teachers that we hired, who were world language teachers but didn't have elementary training, because there isn't elementary training, because there aren't elementary programs to hire you afterwards. So you get a little, like, a little dash in your program, and the licensure does not require you to have elementary pedagogy. So while we're meeting the standards of the state, we don't, that doesn't require what we know you need to be successful. So it's not only been the world language training about how do we have effective elementary classes, but working within the greater Brookline professional development of, responsive classroom is a social-emotional program that we use in our, in our classes. So how do we train the world language teachers to become familiar and proficient in that? And what are the connections that we can make? What elements can we adapt or adopt into world language practices? So we are, you know, we have folks who have, who have developed a great set of skills, and they've worked incredibly, incredibly hard. What I don't, I never do a great job of just explaining from the top, is nobody teaches one grade level. So you might teach five grade levels, K, one, two, three, four, and you have a cart, and you roll your way through the building all day, every day, and you have five minutes in between. You have a lunch and a prep, and some days you might, if you have a really, really good schedule, you might have a nice-looking schedule. But a lot, the vast majority of the teachers are room-to-room on a cart all day long. That requires a level of organization and preparation that is just not the same. One needs to be highly organized and highly prepared. But when I was in my middle grades classroom, you know, I had my stuff, I was set, it was my room, we all knew where to go, we all knew what to do, we all knew how to find everything within the first weeks, six weeks of school. I, if I'm teaching K through four, and I have 12 or 14 different classrooms into which I enter, with 12 or 14 different classroom environments, and 12 and 14 classroom setups that I have, might be able to get my cart in or not, or in this room there's enough rug space, or there isn't, or I can connect to the overhead or I can't, or I have some technical difficulties and they're my eight of my 20 minutes, you know? I can't afford that. So the, the actual day-to-day rigorous experience of the teachers, coupled with, and if I teach the same five grade levels next year, if, I might have, you know, one of them's going to be a new prep, right? That's a new, a whole new, we've never taught this before. And I'm trying to really reflect on my practice and become a great elementary world language teacher across five grades. These teachers are who we, who we need to thank. I mean, they have been invested. And the ones who have been here for seven years have really, you can tell, you can tell. And those who are new are not working any less hard.
Right.
And we continue, we continue to be, you know, I, we're lucky. We're getting the right people.
I'm going to ask you one other, one other quick one, and then I'm going to do this, the, the part about sixth grade, so it has a transition to the next presentation, which is mine. So how's that? So you've mentioned assessment, and this is a committee that's always interested in the amount of time that we're spending on testing or assessment. And could you talk particularly about the fifth grade? Because I know you did a great job talking with principals the other day about the amount of time that takes on an individual student basis and what exactly we're looking to do even next year as we, as we begin to work that in, in fifth grade.
So talking specifically about the fifth grade assessment?
Yes.
Okay. Did I not answer your question?
Just the amount of time.
Sorry, okay, yeah. So the fifth grade oral proficiency interview could be 20 or 30 minutes, depending on which assessment we actually land with. There are two options. And it would be one or two adults with one, one or two testers in the room and the classroom teacher present. So the world language teacher present.
So we're not doing all fifth graders?
Not all fifth graders. We have a very small sample.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I think what was very helpful was to understand some of the cost elements that we're, we talked about a little bit, we'll probably talk about those a little bit more in the next section, and some of the results for students that you were showing in the apple results and some of the other things. So, so thank you very much, we appreciate it. Unfortunately, we're out of time. We could probably do this for much, much longer, and we'll probably talk about it again. But thank you for coming.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
We'll get a transcript copy of the presentation in five minutes.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay.
We're switching order. Mr. Shane's coming in at seven.
All right, the, the update on current budget issues.
So let me, let me say two things to start. One is, is just to piggyback on, on, on what Dawn has said. Dawn talked a bit about sixth grade, and the issue that we're exploring in sixth grade, and there are, there are many issues within, within this topic, is the changing of that program, potentially changing that program. And we're looking at two different issues, right? We're looking at the opportunity, the possibility of allowing students to begin to have a choice in sixth grade, right? And what that might look like. There are a lot of districts that do that. And the other issue is the number of days per week that students have the language in the sixth grade. And right now, it's three. It is the 45-minute model that exists in seventh and eighth grade, but it's three days versus five days. And there are some issues with that, as you can imagine. That sounds like a, like an easy one, but to principals looking at the, at what they're able to do with those two days, it's not. There are many support programs, intervention programs that run in that timeframe, those other two days. And so principals aren't so sure about, about that, because that's important time in a very crowded day. So we're, we're looking at those issues in terms of the specifics of the recommendation. And, and that's just sort of a, a piece of what we're going to talk about for the next 20 or 30 minutes, right? And that's, that's the issue of what we're, what we're looking at here. So I'm going to start on a really large, a really high level, 30,000-foot level, and say that, say what I said to senior staff today, which is, I'm concerned about this, beyond the things that we've talked about already, I'm concerned about this set of spending plans on a, on a whole nother level. And it starts with that, that we're, we're probably not today where I'd like to be today in the development of a budget for February 12th. And there are a number of reasons that are in this presentation that I'm going to talk about that I think have us at that point, but, but we're concerned. We're concerned about that because of the number of things that we're being asked to develop. And as I say in this first slide, right, the first item, or two, the fact that we're going to go into a budget that we're going to present to you on the 12th, and we're going to have less information available to us than we've had in the, in the 11 years that I've been here. We're going to have less information available to us, I should add, in a timely fashion, than we've ever had. And we're being asked to create multiples plans, at least two. At least two. So what are some of those items, right? Well, the first is, it's now clear that House One will be delayed until early March. That means we will not have initial estimates normally available to us prior to the introduction of the superintendent's budget message, including unrestricted general government aid, Chapter 70, circuit breaker, you could add Metco, kindergarten grant. None of that will be available to us. It's all a guess that won't even be based on a House One. That gets more complicated later on when you factor in what we know about the FY15 state budget. But I'll talk about that in a moment. So the second piece is, it appears that override question or questions may not be finalized by the Board of Selectment until, well, the earliest January 27th. And there's some discussion that that may slip to February 3rd. And just to be clear, what that means is that we're asked to present a budget on February 12th based on information that we wouldn't have available to us till the evening of February 3rd. And that's quick. You might know, okay, so that's an understatement, right? So you might know that the town has changed their budget presentation date to the 17th. In the 10, in the 11 years that I've been here, 10 prior budgets, the town has presented their budget on Tuesday, we've presented our budget on Thursday every year. They've pushed, for a variety of reasons, their presentation of their budget to our school vacation week, which is February 17th. You're looking at two of the reasons right here, right? So beyond that, this long-term budget model that we've been working with, that you've seen many, many times, was developed in October of 2013. A significant number of the key factors, including enrollment projections, have changed since then. Therefore, the, what we present in the budget proposal will, not may, will vary from, from those items. And even if nothing else had changed in terms of the way we look at program, the way we look at offerings, you'd be looking at this, which has changed dramatically. I'll remind you that the October 2013 model was based on 630 students. It's been adjusted since then to 650 students. And the current kindergarten, which began in the year at 684, is now 695 students. And by the way, the FY13 kindergarten and the FY14 kindergarten are larger today as second grade and first grade than they were upon entry at kindergarten. So there have been adjustments to that model. So I, you know, I've already been in situations where people have looked at the model and said, oh, you need 8.4 literacy specialists over the three years. That's right. In October of 2013, we forecast a need for 8.4, I'm making that number up, 8.4 literacy specialists. And that has changed. It's changed because of the way we're looking at program, it's changed because of our number of students. So we, we can't be held to those numbers. It was a model. Another of these big picture items is that our, our budgets are being built using local aid assumptions that were designed in the fall. Given the shortfall recently quantified in the current state budget, it remains to be seen if the assumptions for FY16 will need to be adjusted again. So I want to put some numbers to that for you. Essentially, as Mr. Cronin would say, were he here, that's a bogey of $800,000. That's the difference between present and the forecasts that we made, which you will recall, I believe, were made assuming we would move closer to the 17.5% floor forecast for future state budgets, that we would move closer to that over the two-year period. And that is in doubt. That is in doubt. We'll have a better picture tomorrow and Saturday, because generally, as Mr. Cronin shared with me yesterday, there are discussions at the MMA conference, right? Hints, even if there isn't, sometimes there's been an announcement of House One, that's not going to happen. But at least there might be hints about unrestricted general government aid, there might be hints about Chapter 70. I will tell you what I've heard is that there's a feeling that even if Chapter 70 isn't increased, that unrestricted general government aid may be because of commitments made during the campaign. So we may get So we may get near the $800,000, but we may not get there in the way that we forecast to get there. But it all remains to be seen. We could be here next week, having a conversation about a reduction in that $800,000 assumption, which would certainly change our planning. Or at least our planning of where the dollars to support FY16 could come from. So, let's switch and talk a little bit about the no-override budget. So the no-override budget will include at least a $650,000 shortfall for schools before consideration, before consideration of any of the enrollment-driven staffing or program increases. So you know, from looking at some of the models, that if you factor in those enrollment-driven staffing and program increases, you're actually closer to a $3 million shortfall. If you assume all of those things that have been historically called catch-up and enhancement, but which we believe are enrollment-driven, right? You're closer to a $3 million shortfall. So whatever of those items you assume to include in the FY16 spending plan increases that $650,000 shortfall. If we're to say in the budget we're presenting you as the no-override, the guidance counselors are not negotiable. They're going in. What we've done is we've just increased that shortfall by $120,000. And caused us to have to look at other things in terms of reductions. So I want to couple that with, oops, a couple others. So the no-override 16 budget also does not assume, and we've discussed this at finance, does not assume a successful override or other revenue enhancement strategies in FY17 and beyond. And that's important. That's an important assumption to our work in preparing a budget for you. Because it may influence the way we look at, is this a trimming, or is this a program? Right? Now, I want to couple that, I want to talk some more about that. But I want to do it after I show you this next bullet, which I think is really, really important, which we discussed a bit at the last finance meeting. So we're very concerned about timing. We're very concerned about making sure that we put out things that are real while trying to avoid, or prevent, or minimize panic. We're concerned because an identified program or staffing to be eliminated or reduced as part of an FY16 no-override scenario will create concern on the part of impacted staff members. And so we could end up sitting here on May 6th, being very pleased with the results of an election, and having seen impact on programs during that time. Now, I made a mistake in the finance meeting when I talked with you about this, and I said, there's another factor to include here, and that is our notification date for employees. And that's right, but it's not nearly as dramatic as what I said to you on that day, because what I forgot is in our most recently negotiated educator evaluation system for our non-professional status teachers, that date is actually now May 1st, not April 15th. And May 1st is certainly closer to May 5th than, right? So it's minimized. I mean, we have had some discussions, I'll say here, we're trying to look at strategies, trying to work with the union as to whether there's some way to delay that for people who would be impacted by the budget beyond the May 5th election day. But that isn't going to do it. That isn't going to solve the problem. So we're trying to look at, so let me give you two ends of the, sort of, the continuum. And one is the one we've talked about. You factor in, let's just make up a number, you factor in another $650,000 of those enrollment-driven items and include them in the budget, which may be where we are, right? You now have a deficit that you're dealing with of $1.3 million. And so you have to reduce something. You have to cut something. We have to pay attention to your guidelines, we have to pay attention to the costs of programs, we have to pay attention to what we think is critical and what we might have to live without. Right? And in that scenario, we will, we could cause certain people who have a very limited license, like the presentation Ms. Carnegie just gave, those are not people who bump into an elementary classroom. We could cause them to be very concerned about their future. And to not wait till May 5th. To not wait. Because you also heard there are school districts starting programs. There are opportunities. Okay? So the other way we look at this is, can that happen in year two? Are there ways to cobble together items that say, we do this in year one, and we take that program reduction in year two? We buy ourselves some time to get better information, right? But there's a cost to that. It's other kinds of reductions or assumptions. So these are not great scenarios versus bad scenarios. They're choices among bad scenarios in that no-override plan, again, which will be on the table for everyone to see. And everyone means people in town who need to see it, right, as they think about how they might look at a question, but also people who work here, who think about how that might impact them and their future. So I want to talk about some other factors that go into our budget planning, and talk about some issues that I think need to be talked about here, and talked about a lot over the next few weeks. So school departments created balanced budgets during enrollment growth, which have furthered the educational agenda described in our strategic plan through efficient use of resources and spending reductions. And I didn't, I'm not the only person saying that. The override study committee said it. The override study committee report says that the issue here has been enrollment growth. It has not been, you know, spending money on items or programs in the budget that weren't I also want to go, want to skip for a second, and I'll come back to these. But I want to go, that's the problem with me having designed this like this, right? So I want to go here. And I'm going to go here a number of times. So I heard someone say the other day at the hearing that the town has really examined efficiencies, and has taken a number of efficiencies over time, and that, you know, the school department needs to pay attention to those kinds of things. And I'm showing you something that quite frankly has been in our budget documents that gets added to in terms of reductions, choices we've made over the last X number of years in order to fund other items. Every year. Every year. Any number of them, I can say, to start, are not necessarily choices we would have made, and in fact, some of them we've restored. So someone said to me, well, you cut the data analyst, and then three years later, you brought it back. That's right. That's right. Because that was a mistake. But I want to talk about a couple of these in particular. And just to point out that these I look at more as real areas of efficiency. So this whole area, and you'll see some other slides on it, again, nothing that you haven't seen before, but this whole area of returning students to system-wide programs, which saved the district in FY14 $445,000. But which comes with building programs. And as I've said to you over and over again, that is both a cost savings and an improvement in program. You heard a parent at the hearing the other morning say that. Parent said, up until X number of years ago, I have a student in out-of-district placement, I was very concerned about the level of education. But over the last X number of years, I've been very pleased. I have a student both in the high school and a student in an out-of-district placement. Right? Music to my ears. But we've brought students back. We've built programs that have kept students from going out. And the facts are very simply in the numbers. But you have to spend money on programs to do that. You can't will students back from very successful, very good out-of-district placements. The second one is this area in the payroll office consolidation. So a number of years ago, we, I think it's FY09 now, we consolidated payroll. We were in on that work with the town. We've done, in this town, a number of these kinds of consolidations and mergers of services where it seemed to fit in an effort to save dollars and improve program. And I will tell you, I mean, if Mr. Rowe were up here, he would tell you, we struggle with this. Not to the point where it's not a good idea, but a shared office can be a struggle. Right? But it's certainly worth what we were able to save to devote to other issues, to devote to student program in the district. Back in FY08, we eliminated the hiring of retirees. We had a system in place that brought retirees on, and when they came on, they came on at the level that they left the district, which was generally top step. Right? So since then, that's gotten modified in some ways to where we bring them on, but we bring them on at times in certain situations at a more reasonable step. We saved $100,000 by doing that. That's an efficiency by any measure that's continued and been successful. We replaced four custodial positions with contracted services in '07. So we have very good language in that collective bargaining agreement that allows us to maintain our employee staff, which we need. But in certain key aspects, particularly as we grow, or we have people resign, gives us the flexibility to contract that work out under the supervision of our people. And that saved us $27,000. We consolidated the educational technology and library coordinator positions. Quite frankly, positions that belonged together, we felt at the time, in '07, saved us $82,000. We eliminated a school bus. Each and every year, we take a look at our transportation, our regular transportation, to see if there are ways to make that transportation more efficient while maintaining appropriate service for kids. That year, we found that it was, and we saved $27,000 by doing that. Now, there are other areas on here that I could talk about, and there are other areas on here that I could talk about, and by the way, some of you around the table could talk about and say, ooh, that one, that one was much more difficult, and I'm not sure we did the right thing there. But we did it because we said, even in those areas where now I look back and say, ooh, not so sure, we did it because we identified other priorities, right? We said, well, look at this, and our ability to do a consolidation or a change in that area versus this, and this is more important. This is more important to our student programs. So we're going to make that tough choice. Right? But I will not apologize, nor will I stand up here and say, yeah, you're right, the school department hasn't really looked at efficiencies and those kinds of things we have. And I just went through four or five very simple, quick examples of where we've made choices. Now, the difference is, as Dr. Fisher-Mueller points out to me all the time when we have these conversations, right, is we've made those choices many times because we have growing student enrollment, and we have to fund other things, right? Go back to that quote. That's how we've paid for some of that enrollment growth by these things. So some people look at those and say, well, you've just devoted those funds to some other place. Yeah, because there are 2,000 more students. That's right, we have. So hopefully, we'll be able to detail these more and engage in more of that conversation throughout this budget season, because I think it's important. So the other piece of evidence around this is this chart, which you've seen many times, but you've not seen with the yellow. So what I wanted to highlight are those last three years in particular, where we've had surpluses. Now, surplus is a funny word when you're budgeting one-time dollars, isn't it? So what that largely means is that over the last three years, we've spent considerably less, or none, of the one-time dollars that we've budgeted, therefore making those one-time dollars available to the next year. So I know you hear often from people that the school department seems to have a bottomless pit of one-time money. And I will tell you, that's why. Right there. That's why. Because we call them surpluses on this chart, but what they actually reflect is are not spending whatever X was in terms of the one-time dollars that were budgeted, allowing us to budget them the next year as our enrollment continues to grow. So you've heard me say, time is up. I'll say it at least one more time tonight. Time is up with respect to a variety of enrollment-driven areas of the budget that have been short-changed in prior spending plans, including guidance counselors, literacy specialists, math specialists, nurses, and technology. Time's up. I've told you, the last two budgets in particular, that we were getting very near the end of the line with respect to this strategy of continuing to fund classroom teachers and neglect the supports around them. The administrators in buildings, the guidance counselors, the nurses, the literacy specialists, the math specialists, the technology. And we have reached the end. And if you don't believe me, ask our staff. Ask our teachers. And so we will need, in a no-override budget, I stand before you tonight and tell you that in a no-override budget, the shortfall will not be $650,000. It will be more. Because we will need to make at least, even in a no-override spending plan, some strategic investments in those areas. We will. Put that in front of you. The spending plan will include key recommendations from the enrichment and challenge support program review, which you're going to see at curriculum subcommittee meeting in about a week. Okay? So you will see, at least in whatever we build that first budget around, you will see recommendations around that plan, because we believe it's important, and we believe it's important to build in these recommendations to support what people have done and put in front of us. Our tech, I stole this from a parent testifying the other day, right? Our technology plan, no part of it, no part of it is an enhancement. Right? So there's this, part of what the selectmen have put forward for people to comment on is the idea of a pyramid, right? Culling out part of the technology plan and saying, well, this part's driven by enrollment, this part's driven by an enhancement. There is no part of this technology plan which reflects an enhancement. It is part of a teaching and learning initiative, and quite frankly, it's meat and potatoes, it's the basics. And it's achieving, as you've heard from your student representative, as you've heard from teachers, as you've heard from principals, as you start your work at the curriculum subcommittee, in terms of hearing from principals about their school improvement plans, that it is an integral part, even over the very short time that we've been able to infuse larger amounts of dollars in this plan, it has become an integral part of what goes on in classrooms. Our budget proposals are based in a belief, supported by data, that investments in regular education supports and interventions are the best way to create efficiencies while improving outcomes for all students. You've heard me say too often that you need to spend some money to save money and to improve outcomes. And I think the literacy initiative, and I won't go into much detail, I think we'll have some data to share with you over the coming months. You know, as you look at some of the schools in particular that we have managed to implement the program fully in, the literacy initiative that we have in place, we are seeing pretty dramatic results, particularly in certain grade levels where the focus has been around moving kids, whether we're using standardized assessments. And we're beginning to look at certain special education categories, and whether students are needing IEPs because they're getting those regular interventions. And we're seeing really promising results in a very short, in a very, you think Dawn's number of years on that program were a very short time? This has been three, four years tops in some of those areas. And we're seeing some very good numbers. But you don't achieve that. You don't achieve the reduction in the percentage of students who have an IEP in this district, which is a fact at the elementary level in particular, right? Without other interventions. It doesn't happen. As someone whose opinion I value very much in this particular area said to me on a number of occasions, you know, you need to make sure that special education isn't the only way of getting supports. And until you do that, people will look and say, that's how you get supports. We are committed to enhancing the dollars available to building principles for implementing the goals of school improvement plans. This includes in- This includes investments in professional learning and student supports, meaning controlled by the principal. So I will stand in front of you and say, after 11 years, one of the areas that concerns me the most is our failure over time to put dollars in the hands of building principals, which is the norm in most districts, around initiatives, right, at the building level, whether there's professional learning initiatives, or homework centers, or those kinds of things, and put them in a position, as our parent leaders will tell you, where they're asking parent leaders and PTOs for those dollars. And we are committed to at least beginning to remedy some of those issues. And you'll see, you will see some proposals as we begin to discuss this more fully in those areas. We're committed to continuing enhancement of our special education programs designed to ensure quality teaching, learning, and support for Brookline students in Brookline. And what I want to do, just to skip for a second, I think, is just go here, and again, a slide you've seen. I mean, this has been an area of great success, it's been talked about in committee after committee after committee, in terms of what we've been able to do. People say, well, what's the secret to this? And the answer is, there's no secret. It's all of these pieces. We created a team facilitator model. We reduced the number of people who were responsible for chairing IEPs and put it in the hands of well-trained, experienced people. We reallocated special education aides to kindergarten and first grade. We developed system-wide programs. We restructured our home-based service models. We created administrative capacity, elementary guidance, and additional director of elementary special ed, and there's, by the way, a high school position in there. We restored fiscal and operations specialist in special education department. And it is sort of, it's not that exact model, but it's that recipe that we need to bring to other areas. We need to continue to work on in special education, because there are more district supports to be built for our students. And to the next item, we need to enhance our administrative structure. The enhancement of our special education administrative structure has proven to be a key strategy in improving these services for students. We need to utilize the Collins Center recommendations, which you will see in a formal presentation on February 12th. To continue this work in buildings, where we've already begun it with the enhancement of our vice principals, to make sure that we could actually manage buildings of 800 students in special education and at the central office. We need to increase our ability to evaluate the effectiveness of particular initiatives. You know, I'll talk about another area of concern for me. A number of years, I've stood in front of you, and we've given you a superintendent's message that says, certain areas, the tutorial program at the high school. We need to have a comprehensive evaluation of that, so that we know, we know what that's helping us achieve in terms of our district goals and objectives, and we haven't done And we need to. And part of that's been about the capacity that we have in terms of conducting those evaluations. I mean, the great thing is, we have the data analyst or research and accountability individual, and the bad news is, we have one person to try to coordinate all that. But we need to do a better job in that area. So a couple other things, just to enhance some of these arguments. You've seen this before, and we're in the process of trying to take a look at this model and talk about some other areas like this. I mean, the great thing about this is, it shows you what's actually happened in terms of the growth in special education versus the projection of what could have happened, of what would have happened without the interventions, we believe, that we put in place. In my mind, that's an efficiency. And then we talked about these areas. So on Monday, our plan is to talk more specifically with you about where we are, and we're behind in terms of the specifics of what we're now guessing about. I mean, we're guessing, we're taking a look at the questions that the board of selectmen have put out for comment, and we are looking at those questions, and we're trying to build a budget around those, so that we can adapt it as they change. We're taking a look at a no-override scenario and trying to do the same, but we're behind. So Monday, we want to talk to you about some more specific issues, and then we'll get more specific as we get closer to the 12th in that finance meeting. I believe it's on the 11th, 10th, 9th, Monday, the 9th. We'll talk with you specifically about the budget recommendations. But again, that will be about six days removed possibly from the framing of questions by the board of selectmen. Happy to try to answer a couple of questions before I turn this over to Mr. Cronin to talk about the CIP.
Questions for the superintendent? I've got a couple, but go ahead. Ms. Charapsky, turn on your microphone.
Just a quick question. You had referenced in one of your slides and in your talk, and I wrote it down, other revenue enhancements. So could you just define what that means on your slide number one, two, three, fourth one?
Sure. The assumption that we talked about the last finance meeting. There was a question about if we build a no-override scenario budget in FY16, are we assuming an override in FY17 or FY18 or whatever? Are we assuming, you know, when would we assume, because it's been the number, not my number, the number that's being discussed right upstairs, $2 million in those other revenue enhancements? And I believe the conversation was, you assume this is the new, this no-override is the new norm.
And not include those other revenue enhancements?
I'll be honest with you, I don't know how or when. I mean, I've heard arguments that have said, well, if there was no override, would there have to be a discussion about those in FY16? You know, without some further discussion about that, I quite frankly, don't know how to factor that in or when it would be responsible of me to factor it in.
And that, from what we heard, and correct me if I'm wrong, is something like a $2 million?
$2 million.
Estimate. Okay.
Some of that's ours.
Correct.
Right? Some of that rests in the different view that we've had to take on user fees for our buildings, rentals of our buildings, those kinds of issues, which we've done and put in place for the middle of this year, and would, I was going to say enhance, but would carry out over a full year at the very least next year. So some of that would be baked in, but, you know, the rest of it, we haven't touched for now in a no-override scenario. And in the other scenario, we don't have to deal with it, because we're only dealing with FY16.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Dr. Lupini. You mentioned that you want to continue driving, what I'm going to characterize, continue driving some more dollars to the building level for the principals around professional development and some other things. But that is a continuation of something that has started already, because I know several years ago, we were talking about, we were talking about the need in the sense that the principals needed to have more control over what was happening in their building to be able to respond. Could you just talk a little bit about what has been done and what more you're talking about when you talk about doing that?
Well, a number of years ago, you'll recall, because we had these conversations, I think, often, we did drive some additional dollars. They were very limited, but they were largely around professional learning, and I think those support programs in terms of homework programs, those kinds of things. But it was very, very small dollars. I mean, we're talking about, we're talking about more of those dollars, a substantial increase in those dollars. One of the things I'm really interested in is taking a look at what other districts do, what those models look like, you know, what the accountability is, because the, you know, the fear sometimes in sort of those building-based approaches is, we're going to end up with eight different math programs. But we're not going to end up with eight different math programs. Right? What we're going to end up with are some initiatives, right, built around our district strategic plan, in terms of what that looks like individually at the building level, and dollars to support the professional learning around those, as well as the particular unique approaches the principals need to take around creating student support programs like homework centers and other kinds of activities. Right? And we want to enhance their ability to do that and actually make them some, you know, give them some ability to carry out the things that we hold them accountable for in terms
I wanted to support that. I really do think it's important, especially since we look to our principals to be the education leaders for their community. I think it does tie their hands to have significant dollars tied up and put in other people's hands. As we do that, I hope that you will guide us through a process of how we, as a committee, can see that transfer and see through the school improvement plans, through the budgeting per school, because now we can see it through the way it's divided through the curriculum coordinators and the various program investments that we make. But so, even though I definitely support the move, I think it's a really important thing to do for our principals, but I just want to make sure that we continue to be able to see the allocation of dollars.
And I actually don't think it's an either-or. Right? So I think both of those, I mean, you mentioned the coordinators and their work. I think both of these things are important. Right? I think accountability around both of those things are important, but principals, I mean, what we've discovered very clearly is that compared to most systems, principals here historically, we had this discussion how many years ago, principals historically have much less control over budgets than they do in most like communities, or quite frankly, I would say, most communities. And we need to figure out a way to create that balance and yet remedy that.
So just two quick points, because we are running up against time, and we do want to get upstairs by 7:30. The first is that in the budget guidelines that Mr. Chang just ably led us through, there are a couple lines in here which are worth repeating as we think about the no-override budget. I think sometimes in town, it's not entirely clear to people when we're having hard discussions and when we aren't. So I've been given a mandate by some of our school committee members and members of the public to say things like, this is important, now please listen, because we drone on and on, and so this is the important part, please listen. That there are some language in here that's different this year. Right? Number one, it says, we understand that in a no-override situation, it will not be possible to make substantial cuts without impact on potentially even elimination of things that we very much support. And the list includes, including but not limited to athletic programs, adult education, elementary world language, ECS, enrichment challenge support, elementary instrumental music instruction, school within a school, the China exchange program, other programs of very much important value to us. And the second piece of that is, we may need to be looking at adding to or further increasing fees or other charges that would not normally be favorably considered by the school committee. So I expect we will see some or all of that, as distasteful as it may be, in a no-override budget. I think the second piece that would be really helpful on this efficiencies chart, because I think it's tiny print and there's a lot of stuff, is my favorite word, which is bucketing things. I think the first thing to do would be to take out anything that we've actually restored, because I think it's confusing, potentially not helpful. So when we say freeze the director of data management position, if we restored it, it needs to come off the list, because we made a mistake and we restored it, that's fine, but it needs to come off the efficiencies list. I think the second thing would be really helpful to see all the administrative, like true efficiencies bucketed together, if it were things like clerical, payroll, courier, custodial, I mean, there's hundreds of thousands of dollars in real administrative efficiencies that would be helpful. I think the second thing, or the third thing would be helpful, is to see the revenues in one place, they're not on this chart, but as we increase revenues, we've increased tuition for students, that we have a very small number of students we've increased tuition for, we've increased materials fee, we've gotten the Brookline Adult and Community Education Program, I mean incredibly solvent and fully loading more, you know, cost onto that. We've increased, we've tripled athletic fees, we've increased school lunch fees, we've increased beep fees, we've increased rentals. I mean, there's a very long list of revenue adjustments that we've made and ratcheted up over time, and so I expect that there will be, in a no-override scenario, yet another jump, but I think it'll be helpful for people to see that it's part of a progression, that it's not the first time we're doing something, it's actually the third or fourth time. And so for any of these things, that it's, these aren't easy choices to make. It's not like the first time we're asking the revenue question.
I agree with you, and the one I would add is that you talked about adult ed being fully loaded, food services more fully loaded than it's been.
Food services as well, thank you. Yep, food services. I think the fourth one that I had was things that are actually, that may or may not be efficiencies, but are cuts of some sort. So increase in average class size of one and a half is, in a sense, a cut, right? Because it is reducing the amount of service that any child gets. It's not the same as the other kinds of cuts, and I don't want to characterize it as such, but when we reduce library assistance, when we reduce Metco counselors, when we reduce, you know, when we increase class size, those are programmatic changes that result in less. And I think that they're important to call out separately, so they're not confused with the cash cuts, but they are a form. So when people say, why don't you increase class size, we've already increased class size by one and a half, so we're talking about another increase. It's not from zero, and I think, again, without understanding some of that, it's not a fully, it's not a full picture. And then the last thing is, I do think that there's just a special ed story that goes all together. If you think about the home-based services restructuring, the team facilitator model, you know, BHS special ed, some of them are cuts, some of them, we had to build out programs. The savings are tremendous, and I would put that all in the context of what we're trying to do for kids and the services that they get, but I do feel like some of this gets lost, and I think there are just important messages that people need to understand.
Well, it does. And my goal for tonight was just to take you through--
No, that's fine.
--three or four very specific examples.
That was great. No, and that was great. And I guess the same thing is probably true on the capital side. We don't have a budget document for capital, although I've been asked for one, but things like, you know, where have you looked for capital, quote-unquote, efficiencies? And, you know, creating 50 classrooms out of existing buildings seems to me like an awfully interesting thing. Might not be interesting to other people. The rentals of space versus building new. I mean, there are four or five places there also, so I just think it's important, it's one thing to say there's no identifiable fatter waste, but actually giving people tangible examples, so that when they are, you know, presented with a no-override scenario or additional revenues, they have something very tangible to point to, and it's as accurate as possible, so we don't get the, oh, will you restore that later? That doesn't count, sort of stuff. So anyway, just fodder as we get to the next iteration of seeing a budget.
Great. Thank you. Hello, Mr. Cronin? So Mr. Cronin's here to walk you through, talk with you about the CIP and its school implications, and, oh, great, thank you. Thanks for coming.
It's always exciting when the fifth floor gets a visit from Mr. Cronin.
It's always exciting to come to the fifth floor.
We never know what you're going to tell us. Sometimes it's--
Neither do I. So I'm certainly not going through all of this, because we don't have time, and some of it you probably wouldn't be overly thrilled to hear anyway, so--
Au contraire.
I find it's kind of boring in general, but, all right. So this is what we presented to the selectmen in length a couple of weeks ago. What I want to do is just go through a couple of the highlights that, you know, very timely since, in about 17 minutes, you'll be going upstairs to talk about debt exclusion as part of the override conversation, so, and then I just, so, go through this and a couple of slides to talk about the capacity issue that folks seem to be talking about a bit as well. So, you know, our CIP is guided by some very solid and prudent financial policies, and this CIP complies with all of them. We're talking about a $270-plus million six-year plan that's updated annually. The big pieces in here on the school side, and really in general, is the devotion school project at the most recent estimate, $118.4 million. There's also $6 million over the six years for what's been called classroom capacity. It's those monies that have allowed the 50 classrooms that we just talked about to be created, the beep spaces to be leased and those types of things. We, I'll get into that a little bit more in a minute or two. What I really want to talk about on this slide is the fourth bullet that talks about how devotion is currently planned to be funded, which is, I know, a little bit confusing, because this isn't textbook funding with the CIP capacity, debt exclusion in state, but we've been able to basically hold on to previously $54 million of CIP capacity over the last maybe four or five CIP cycles. And then the last couple of CIP cycles, we said, well, $54 million isn't enough to cover the whole cost, so we need to start talking about a debt exclusion. So where we're at now is, we're recommending that the $54 million that had been in the CIP for devotion be decreased to 46, which is an $8 million reduction, which actually will go to support, and I'm going to say this a couple of different ways over the next 15 minutes, that goes to support the leased, the cost for leasing of-- over the next 15 minutes, that goes to support the leased, the cost for leasing of beep space, that goes to the leasing of any additional space in this area of town, and to lease modulators at Baker School. And I'll come back to that as well. So if you decrease the 54 by eight, you have to increase the debt exclusion by eight. So what we're talking about is a $44.6 million debt exclusion, $46 million of CIP, otherwise known as within levy capacity, and then the state kicking in about $28 million, which is approximately 24%, 25%. And that's an estimate from the architect that I'm pretty sure will change as we move forward with updated cost estimates. The other thing on this slide that's important, very important and should be reiterated numerous times, is the very last bullet that says, "Debt exclusions will be required for any future major elementary school project or projects, and for a portion of any BHS project." So stated another way, if there's a ninth elementary school or something similar to that, it's going to need a debt exclusion. For the high school, I've been able to, and I admit, it's a totally backed-in number. It's my way of showing folks what CIP can support currently without major modifications to other portions of the CIP. So $35 million of town money, if you add the state to that, it's about a $50-some-odd million project, which I'm guessing won't be enough. So it's another way of saying that if and when a high school project is seriously considered, you're probably talking about going to the voters for some portion of a debt exclusion as well. I'll skip through that type of stuff. Let me just, so, on the schools, again, of the 270-some-odd million, 203-plus is dedicated to the schools. Some of it is a pretty, you know, day-to-day, mundane, yet very important for the building folks, energy conservation, elevators, you know, fenestration, envelope repairs, masonry, energy management, all that stuff that the building department, the work that they do in your buildings on a day-to-day basis. And then you see the projects that I was just talking about, the high school addition. You see, if you add the 35, one in the 18, nine, you're at, what's that, 56 million? Again, probably not enough, but that's a backed-in number to show what's available, what's not available. But thanks, what's really important for, and I know we talked about this before, but to remember is that if you look at fiscal, is this thing? Yep. If you look at fiscal 17, this is the first phase for the high school project, so feasibility schematic design. So if you submit an SOI in the spring, and MSBA gives you the blessing to move forward, you know, sometime around the fall town meeting, would actually be able, don't worry that it says fiscal 17, it's a bond authorization, would be able to get it at the fall town meeting and be able to move forward with that. If it gets, you know, in the spring of calendar 16, we'd still be able to go to town meeting and get the bond authorization. But there's money there planned for to do that, that part of the project. And then you see devotion toward the bottom here, the 46 of CIP, the 44.6 of debt exclusion, and the state share. And then just two other things. Old Lincoln School, I think Peter had said ad nauseam a year or two ago that the $3.5 million wasn't enough. I guess he was right. So there's $1 million being requested for FFNE and to finish up some heating and ventilation work that needs to be done if that building's going to be utilized the way it sounds like it's going to be used for the next five, seven, 10, whatever, number of years. And then the last one, I said I'd come back to it, so let me just explain. So classroom capacity, what we did is we put in, we, no requesting, $2.25 million in the first year. A million of that is actually coming from the reallocation of the Driscoll School feasibility schematic design. We know MSBA basically rejected our SOI, so what we're doing is we'll ask town meeting to reallocate that million dollars, put it into classroom capacity, so it's there for any upfront work that needs to be done for any rental properties in the Pierce District, for, you know, if we need additional money for modulators or anything like that, it's in there in the first year. So there's a pretty good chunk of change there for that. The 750 in the out years, so that's two things. One, you know, and I should say that this 2.25 includes 750 for what I'm about to say. So a lot of the discussion around the override had been moving the beep leases 550 into the operating budget. And then we kind of reversed course and said, "Well, that number's kind of getting up there a little bit, so what can we do to reduce that number, make it more palatable?" We said, "Okay, we'll put that into the CIP." And then the Baker Mods became a reality in some rental space in this area, which was another 200, so you're up to 750. So the way to basically pay for this, so if I put 750, pays you-go projects in here each year, I'd have to bump out $750,000 each year, so it's a cascading effect. So the first year, you bump out 750. That means the next year, you got to find 1.5. The next year, you got to find 2.25. It's impossible unless you really want to take out some of the, you know, park projects that are in all the neighborhoods or street and sidewalk work, those types of things. So what we did was we, you know, that's the equivalent almost of about an $8 million bond authorization. That's debt service on about an $8 million bond. So when I said earlier, the $54 million became 46, that's what's happening. So what we are not doing is borrowing money for leases. What we're doing, in effect, is increasing the debt exclusion in order to free up capacity that we can use to pay on a cash basis for those lease costs. So I hope that's clear, because that's a really important part of what we've done with the CIP and how it bleeds into the debt exclusion top. So, and then just to close and obviously answer any questions, let me just, I want to skip to... Actually, let me do two things. Let me go back to this. So I want to highlight this. I think I did this with the board. So every time we talk about tax impact or override and debt exclusion, I always end with, once we fully borrow the money, and that's important, because you'll see, even though the devotion project would be underway prior to fiscal 19, or at least we hope, we don't need to, we won't be paying debt service on the debt exclusion part until fiscal 19. So yes, the operating side will kick in immediately, but this piece doesn't come in until a couple of years out. And remember that the high school comes off in 2020. I mean, it's a lot, so it's about $1 million of debt service that will come off your tax bills and be basically replaced by this. But if you look at how devotion's financed, the 46 million is, where, am I missing it?
Is it, oh, yeah, it's below 40.
Okay. Yep, but I'm missing, where's the rest, where's the 44.6?
It's over here.
No, I need the four, the-
It has to be a 40.
Yeah, where is it?
Uh-oh.
Oh, no, you know what? It's on the previous slide. I broke this in two to make it somewhat readable. There we go. Okay. So you see, here's the 46 for devotion. So for cash flow reasons, we would borrow this probably in two or three chunks. So the first amount is right here. You see, we'd borrow $10 million, so it kicks in in 17, but this is not the debt exclusion piece. Then we'd borrow another $36 million, which kicks in in 18, and then would basically utilize the taxing capacity made available by a debt exclusion. So the long and short of it is impacting tax bills under current plans and fiscal 19 for that project. Okay, so then just to talk about the tightness issue that is getting a little play these days. So two CIP cycles ago, and actually a couple prior, I had been reminding the selectmen that we had this issue that was going to kick in in fiscal 18, because a $54 million devotion project was going to come online. And you see, what this is, is so we have a 6% funding policy, and we like to have a split of about 4.5% of debt and 1.5% is pay-as-you-go, because if you have a good pay-as-you-go component of your CIP, if the economy tanks, and state aid tanks, and your local receipts tank, and you need to pull back a little bit, you don't really want to. But if you have to to save off operating budget cuts, you can say, "You know what? Let's pull back a bit on capital." And we actually did that back in 2008, '09, '09, '10. If you just have a CIP that's all borrowing, you don't have that ability, because once you float the debt, you got to pay back the principal and interest. So we like to have a good balance here, and as you can see here, we don't. We have about three or four million, and then all of a sudden it drops to less than a million, and then it starts to ramp up a little bit. But this is the range that we would prefer as opposed to being at that level. So then, December of '13, we presented the CIP that said, "Fully exclude the devotion school project, free up capacity for some other school projects, and oh, by the way, you normalize your split between debt and pay-as-you-go." So you see here, you basically got $4-plus million a year. Now we're kind of back to ground zero, because we're not fully excluding it. So what you see is a, it's a little bit more. Back a couple years ago, we were saying there would only be $800,000 available in 18. It's 1.7, but it's still, you know, less than half of what you got in these first couple of years. But the real issue is out here. So when I told you that I backed into a $35.1 million number for the high school, that's because of that. So if you were to say, "Can you make it 40?" The answer would be, "No, because this goes away." So that's why I actually moved this out a couple of years, to show folks the impact. And just, and I should also say that, the reason why the high school doesn't kick in until here, even though it's funded early, is because we'd proposed banning it, which is a bond anticipation note, which is a short-term, one-year note, basically, and it's a bridge to permanent financing. So it's another little way to try to make this thing work. It's not something we'd like to do, because, you know, I know the finance director and I view banning as really just, it's kind of a waste of money, just paying interest on a one-year note. But when you have cash flow issues or you're trying to make something aggressive like this work, you kind of do what you need to do. So that's why you don't see the debt service kicking here. It would be impossible for a high school project to fit in in this area. That's why we propose in a couple of years a bans in here to get to that point. So this is that tightness issue that the selectmen had talked about, and I believe that's why you'll hear tonight and you've heard Monday morning, why they're talking about increasing debt exclusion a little bit more to deal with this type of issue here. So I don't know if there's anything else you want to hear or any questions or-
I agree. Probably have a lot of questions, but we don't. We probably have a lot of questions. We don't have any time. So let's take a couple, and then, we know your phone number, unfortunately. Ms. Chalobski.
06.
So a quick question. In these scenarios, what are the assumptions for the percent, for the interest rates on the debt? Because that can really vary some of this, correct?
Yep. Yes. So we are assuming for a 10-year bond, 4.25%, for a 15-year bond, 4.5%, and for a 20-year, 4.75%, and the 25-years at 5%. So, yeah, we'd like to be a little bit conservative. However, just to bore you a bit with the nitty-gritty of this stuff, we could say that the bids came in at 2.5% or 3%, but when you look at the actual debt service schedule, it could be closer to 4% or 4.5%, because there's something called a bond premium, that is cash upfront that we get, so it's great for free cash purposes. But to the, on the investor's side, it actually increases what we have to pay in interest over the time. So the true interest rate might be like 2%, 2.5%, but from a debt service calculation perspective, it's a little higher. And we were pretty much right on our debt service estimates for last spring's borrowing. So, yeah, it sounds conservative, but it's not as conservative as you think. And believe me, I hope we are very conservative in that, you know, when it comes time to ball for devotion, the rates are still like they are today.
Yeah. Thank you.
That's a really simple question, but the $8 million is comprised of the $6 million for classroom capacity and a million?
No, so the $8 million, look at the $8 million this way.
I'm getting confused with the $8 million and the $6.
Yeah, and I'm not doing a good job of explaining it. So the $8 million, look at it as if you were to say, "How much money is needed in one shot-"
Mm-hmm.
"-on $750,000 annually?" I would say we need to borrow $8 million.
Okay, got it. Yep, I got it. Got it.
But we're not really borrowing for-
I got it. No, that's fine. I was just trying to reckon, because it says for a short, I think the language is confusing, is $8 million to pay for a short-term space plan, but because short-term space plan is, shows up a few different places, I think that was the confusion. Rebecca.
Thank you, and thank you for all this, Sean. It's always amazing to have your clear presentations. But now, the one thing that I'm confused on, and I'm going to ask you to clarify this, because I know I'm going to be called on to explain it to people at some point, and I don't really understand it. So two pieces of the, of where the tax bill changes for people, you said that the, when the devotion, if we successfully do the debt exclusion for devotion, that that will not appear on people's tax bills until fiscal 19? Was that right?
Yes, based on, that's the wrong slide. Yes, based on our borrowing plan of having the CIP trio go first, basically, which is two chunks of it, and then when that's gone, then we basically take advantage of the debt exclusion.
Okay, so-
We use CIP dollars first.
Right, so we CIP dollars first.
People are going to ask a really simple question, like, so when, if I vote for-
When does my tax bill go up?
Right, when does my tax bill go up?
Say, under current borrowing scenarios, fiscal 19.
And it would go down, so you also said that the high school bonding, debt service ends the following year, and that one sort of, that the fiscal 19 increase will be off, is it a zero sum, basically?
No, 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 no.
No, no, not even close.
And actually, 2020 is the last payment, so it comes off, so 21 goes away.
2021.
So the number was about 3.1, 3.2 million for devotion.
Right.
It's about a million now for the high school.
Okay, okay, so it's not, so, but, so it's a little bit, it's offset a little bit, so the tax bill will go up a little bit. It'll get a little offset a couple of years later when the high school ends.
A third of it will be offset.
Right.
A third of it will be offset, okay.
And to be honest, I mean, there could end up being four phases of borrowing, because under the current process of the MSBA, we can't finally borrow until the audit's done and we get our final reimbursement, which is quite a undertaking for them. So there actually could be a final little piece, so it might not all be that 3.2 in one shot anyway.
Okay. Last question, Mr. Pollock, which is going to be quick.
Yes, quick question. On the $8 million, $6 million, the non-devotion school CIP piece, you've got a little over $2.25 million to do a lot of really important work in fiscal 16. After that, the money's pretty much the same money as is dedicated to the leases. So that means that there's no CIP money for Charlie Simmons to keep making offices and classrooms and things not a cent in the other five years.
Because what we've been hearing is, there is no more.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
But the first year's sum should be enough to hold, you know, to be able to do that a year or two later, if you find another closet somewhere.
But things like, but, I mean, walls still get painted, tiles get replaced.
That's totally separate.
Okay, fine.
That's his operating budget. That's totally separate.
So we will say thank you for being clear, and thank you for making bond math so fun. We appreciate it. And I'm sure there will be more questions, because we have to go. Thank you so much. And we are adjourned.
My pleasure.